Good afternoon, good afternoon everyone, good to see you today. We are on the Water and Land and the Hawaiian Affairs Committee's agenda today. It's Wednesday, February 9th in room 229. And we welcome all of you who are here as well, committee members for two committees, mahalo, and those of you here as well presently, as well as those on Zoom land. And this out of just some housekeeping. This meeting, including the audio and the video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the legislature's website. For the first item on the agenda for today, on SB 735, this is decision-making only and no testimony will be taken. Okay, for the first item with the Joint Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs is a deferred measure as well on SB 735. And this is relating to the disposition of water rights. This exempts the in-stream use of water for commercial kahlo cultivation conducted in a manner consistent with traditional and customary practices of native Hawaiians from the existing process for the disposition of water rights. And members, if you remember at the hearings, I did mention that when we passed this measure last year with regards to kahlo rights, the words "commercial" was deleted as well. But we're into 2023 and I, on behalf of my committee as well, believe that whatever is grown with the kahlo practices that is cultural and practical for the state of Hawaii, that we created this commercial portion of the measure so that those that grow, of course, our most precious kahlo, will be able to sell it as well on the commercial side. And so with the both committees hearing the measure, and I think Chair, we're ready for the recommendations. Okay, so the committee chairs has recommended that we pass SB 735, Senate Draft 1 with these recommendations. We're going to replace the HRS Section 171-58H with a subsection I that reads, "The public auction requirement in Section C of this part shall not be required for a lease of water for commercial kahlo cultivation." And we're defecting the date to July 1st, 2050. And that's the kind of language that would allow the commercial entry on this measure. Okay, the Committee on Water and Land, yes, yes, Senate, yes. For the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs.
Oh, yes, Senator Yehara.
So if you eliminate the auction requirement, what process takes its place?
DLNR.
Don Chang, Department of Land and Natural Resources.
I'm sorry, thank you Chair for being here as well. I know you just popped in, so we're on 735. So the question is posed to you now and if AG is here as well.
I appreciate the question. I believe there will be a permission to allow negotiations. So those people who are actually doing the work, who have the ancestral connections, we will be allowed to directly negotiate a lease with them.
So it allows ancestral connection?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, all right, members, there's no testimonies to be received today, but you can ask questions of the department, if any at all. Okay, hearing none, any further discussions? Okay, moving along, members, we've got good agendas upcoming. Chair's recommendation then as well is to pass with amendments. And for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 735, Senate Draft 1 with amendments. Vice Chair Alefanti, the Chair will vote aye.
Chair's recommendation for the Committee of Water and Land on SB 735 is to report out with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye with reservation. Senator Chang, this is excuse. Senator McKelvey, yes. Senator Favella.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the measure passes with amendments.
Thank you for Hawaiian Affairs Committee's recommendation.
All right, Committee on Hawaiian Affairs, Chair, Chief of Staff. Okay, me I vote aye to Vice Chair, aye. Senator Yehara?
Aye.
Senator Keheo Koloa?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
All right, since this passes.
Thank you, and for Melody, because it's decision-making only, we have an agenda, so I, we all need to get out of this deferred measure and start again for the next hearing notice. Thank you. Okay, IT. Okay. Second. Okay, aloha everyone. Okay, we'll redoing again for formality. We are reopening and we are opening our agenda item of SB 736. And I need to redo all of this again. We'd like to welcome all of you to this hearing. For formalities as well, this meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. And you will find the links to viewing options on the legislature's website. For our Zoom participants, testifier audio is muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Note that the time limit today per testifier on Zoom land is one minute. Time permitting, we will go into decision-making after we hear from all the testifiers as well. Okay. All right, members, we are ready to go into our agenda. Notice of hearing Wednesday, February 8th in room 229 at 1:05 PM. SB 736 relating to housing. And this allows the Hawaii Community Development Authority to approve the residential development on the nine parcels conveyed to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs pursuant to Act 15 Session Laws of Hawaii 2012. This raises the building height limit and increases the maximum floor area ratio for residential development on three of the nine parcels. It exempts the residential developments on the nine parcels from the requirement to dedicate public facilities of land or facilities or cash payments in lieu thereof as a condition of development, the prohibition on sale or assignment of fee simple interest in the land in the Kakaako Community Development District, and the prohibition on residential development in the Kakaako Makai area, appropriates funds for repairs of certain funk structures located on the nine parcels, and for compensation relating to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs pro rata portion of income and proceeds from the Public Land Trust. All right, and for those on Zoom land, the Chairs recommend, we have several items on this today's agenda. We'll try to see if we can at least adjust our schedules. We will give up to 1:25 PM. And with this measure, we have another hot item, a very popular agenda thereafter. And in order for us to pass your bills, so if you have certain testimonies that's redundant, just stand up and say you stand on your testimonies. That we would appreciate it because we do want to hear, you know, from OHA as well. So if you're redundant and somebody already spoke on the same issue, if you can stand on your testimony. However, we will give the Office of OHA the opportunity to come before us. Office of Hawaiian Affairs, mahalo. And as you come up to, can you kind of push the mic towards you? Yeah, so that can be heard throughout. Aloha. Aloha. Aloha Chairs Inui and Shimabukuro. On behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, we thank you sincerely for hearing our bill today. Aloha, I am Kulu Lindsay, the chairperson of the Board of Trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. As native Hawaiians, we want to feel welcome in our own land. But the current laws make us feel most unwelcome. Hakone is Hawaiian land, yet here we are once again asking legislators for permission to develop our land. The lands we now call Hakone were given to OHA to settle a long overdue debt. In 2012, the state offered OHA the 30 acres in Kakaako Makai in lieu of money's owed. We accepted the deal rather than be left with nothing. We also accepted the deal because there was a clear understanding that in order for us to realize the $200 million value ascribed to these lands, lawmakers would have to amend the restrictions on residential development. Fast forward a decade, the restrictions on residential development have not been lifted, even though committee reports from 2012 clearly show that lawmakers knew the law would need to be amended to allow OHA to derive the full value of the land. All we are asking is for justice for Hawaiians. Justice for Hawaiians from their own state government. Justice for Hawaiians in our own native land. My understanding is there are many people standing by to testify. So the Office of Hawaiian Affairs stands in our strong supportive testimony, and we are here to answer any committee questions. Kaho'ao members, any questions? Or, yes, okay. Okay, that's fine. Attorney General. Aloha.
Good afternoon Senators.
Good afternoon.
Deputy Attorney General Ryan Klaunakoli for the Department of the Attorney General. The department has comments on the bill, and our points are contained in our written testimony, but I would like to highlight some points now.
I think that's appropriate, so we have people that would want to know what your recommendations are.
Thanks Senator.
Thank you very much for being here as well.
Thank you. The current draft of the bill appears to be special legislation under Article 11, Section 5 of the Hawaii Constitution because it proposes to lift certain land use restrictions on specific tax map key parcel numbers of state land. We believe though, our concerns would be resolved by replacing the language in the bill specifying the TMK numbers to parcels owned to, and I quote, "Parcels owned by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs." That's our first point. Our second point that I would like to highlight is, we also note that the narrative in this bill incorrectly assumes that the Kakaako parcels that were conveyed to OHA in 2012 were valued without consideration of the prohibitions against residential development. Act 15 of 2012 was the result of jointly introduced and supported legislation from both OHA and the executive branch. The act contemplated the restrictions in place at the time, which included a prohibition on residential development and height restrictions. Also, both the state and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs experts hired to appraise the properties valued them at "commercial use only without the consideration of residential development." To that end, I have appended in our testimony, OHA's appraisal report confirming that. With that in mind, we recommend striking the language at page 16, line 17 to 19, and Section 6 of the bill on page 28. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
So your comment is in reference to all the parcels then? And not only a specific one?
Correct.
Members, this committee feels that you have questions. Please ask them now while it's fresh on our agenda. And we appreciate the Attorney General for being here. Any questions of the AG? Okay, hearing none then, ma...
Question, but I want to...
Okay, all right. You're gonna be around?
Yes.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. DLNR, you have, you're not making comments on this measure. Okay, all right, that's fine. Craig Nakamura, HCDA. Yes. Aloha.
Aloha.
Thanks for being here as well.
Good afternoon Chairs Inui and Shimabukuro, Vice Chairs Alefanti and Favella, and members of the committees. I really appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with the committee. I hope you indulge me with a little bit of class. I'll try to summarize my written testimony as much as I can and then kind of go over some of the highlights.
And I think it's, we recognize that as well. And since you're the land area developer and representing the state as well, and your responsibilities within the region, we appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
But if you can at least understand that they are those in Zoom land and here, we'd like to know your comments.
Sure, thank you very much Chair, appreciate that. So I want to start out by saying that the Hawaii Community Development Agency was formed to really do planning, long-range planning, and to plan development. I voted the 1976 naming legislation and underlined the pertinent parts, long-range planning.
Okay, Craig, can you kind of put the mic right in front of you as well?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. So, and to further frame our comments and to build on the concepts that were in 206E, in this measure, my comments are really kind of aimed at being sort of landowner neutral and maybe try to focus on sound community planning principles in all of my comments. So just to frame that. And there are five sections in this bill, and I'm gonna sort of gloss over some, summarize some, but I want to be sure I go into some specifics on at least sections 2, 3, and 4 of the bill. So I'll try to limit it that way. On Section 1, page 1, line 4 to page 23, those are findings in the bill. And I don't have any other comments to offer aside from what the Deputy Attorney General has offered. In Section 2 of the bill, page 23, line 5 to page 26, line 11, this is sort of the heart of the bill, and it relates to residential development, public hearing, height limit, floor area. So let me make three points maybe to summarize a little bit. One, the current law is the law regarding residential development, and HCDA intends to follow that law. Two, there is a sort of a lot, there is a long history to residential development in Kakaako Makai that started actually out in 1985 when the plan included residential development. In 1990, eliminated residential development. In 2005, residential was added again. But the catalyst for a lot of the discussions that happened today occurred in 2005. And I use catalyst not in a positive way, but in a, you know, in sort of, it was a huge, it was a significant event. And that was when we had proposed that ANB developed residential towers or residential project in Kakaako Makai. What that project engendered is a lot of community opposition. Lot of community opposition. It also spawned and created the Kakaako Planning Advisory Council known as CPAC. That effort took almost five years, 40 meetings, a lot of stakeholder, lot of stakeholder input, and really culminated in the Kakaako Makai conceptual master plan that set out a vision for this group. That CPAC group also included representation, you know, from OHA. Now, because of that effort, or parallel to that effort, the legislature had passed Act 317 Session Laws of Hawaii 2006, and that codified no residential development. Senate Bill 736, just to be clear, it doesn't, it's not a blanket repeal of residential in Kakaako Makai. It asked for repeal, as a Deputy Attorney General said, on the nine parcels of land that are owned by OHA right now. And again, just to avoid any doubt about this, if the residential development restriction is lifted on these nine parcels, if it is, the applicant would still have to come to the Hawaii Community Development Authority to review any development permit. It would still be subject to the Makai rules. It would still have to follow the current contested case hearing requirements, which I would note is, was also enacted in 2006, almost around in the same session, as a lot of you know. And it requires two hearings statewide notice, so a presentation hearing and a decision-making notice.
And I was here then as well, with Senator Yehara.
Yeah. So that's, those are the major points I want to bring up on residential. So as a result of those hearings, as a result of the law, HCDA listened. We heard the comments, and we heard the comments loud and clear. I think the voices were clear as a result of that CPAC effort. And that's just the fact. I have specific comments in, on page 23, lines 19 to 21. There's some language that says "provided further" in lines 19 to 21. And I would suggest Chairs and Vice Chair of the committees that, you know, that language be deleted. I don't want to create any ambiguity or lack of clarity that after that, after the public hearing in Section B is obtained, that is concluded that, you know, all that's left is, you know, we can approve it. There's other requirements that need to be met before we approve it or review it. So I just want to make sure that I remove any ambiguity about that. I also want to point out on page 24, lines 1 to 20, that applicant has proposed a public hearing process. And I'm okay with that, Chairs. That is their public hearing process. Lot of applicants go to neighborhood boards, they do community meetings, and they get public input. Because as you know, the hallmark of planning is good community engagement, just like we did with CPAC, and you know, that was extensive. The bill also asks that they change the, our public hearing process regarding these. And I would strongly, strongly suggest that that language be deleted and we just, we retain the contested case procedure that was adopted by the legislature, enacted by the legislature in 2006. That process has worked. It has two public hearings, one decision-making and one presentation. And there's, you know, notice requirements. It has worked for developers, I think it's worked for the community. On the height and density, which starts at pages 25, pages 25, lines 8 to lines 20, the height and density only apply to certain, they're asking for certain lots in Makai. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we are the planning and development agency for the district. The legislature has trusted us to plan and develop land use zoning rules and laws for the district. I would suggest that things like increased height, increased density, FAR, be something that HCDA should look at from a planning perspective. Does it make sense? And look at all the implications of it. The 400-foot height levels, I think the planners at that time, I apologize for the time Chair. The planners at the time envisioned 45 to 60 feet at the shoreline, 100 feet stepping up to 100 near the parks, and stepping up to 200 at Almona Boulevard, and then 400 across the way. Same thing with density, they look, envision density being low at the shoreline, stepping up a little bit, and then stepping up at Almona. If there's gonna be an increase in height and density, I think we're gonna have to look at this and conduct an environmental assessment to see what impacts are. Is there enough sewer capacity? What are the traffic implications? Is there water? What are the environmental concerns that are gonna, you know, gonna be impacted by that? Not to mention, in 2005, when the rules were promulgated, sea level rise wasn't on anybody's radar, anybody's radar. But now it's sea level rise is a big concern. There's a bill that's going through the legislature now to look at the impacts of sea level rise in our district. House Bill 1179. So I would, I would ask that those things be brought back to us to look at. The other thing that is somewhat concerning is the bill asked to be exempted from public facilities dedication requirements. This is, this is a requirement that we place on certain developments, and it asks the applicant to dedicate land or cash for public facilities like parks, streets, other kind of amenities that really enhance the urban community. And there are only certain exceptions to public facilities dedication. And I would suggest that this is not the case to make an exemption for. We allow, you know, masonry corporations, some exemption. If there's gonna be a state entity doing a public project, we would allow that, we allow that kind of exemption. But for example, if OHA is gonna ask a private developer to do, develop on their lots, similarly how maybe, you know, other landowners do it, typically that's not the kind of thing we would ask or seek an exemption on. We shouldn't exempt it from public facilities dedication. Furthermore, if there's an exemption like this, it's really gonna make it hard, I think, for us to enforce this public facilities dedication requirement on other applications. So I'll just wrap up here by saying that on the rest of the bill, Section 5 and 6, I don't have any comment on those sections, those asked for appropriations, and that's not for me to comment on. In some, you know, I just appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts. I've tried to approach this from a planning perspective. Before this and after this, you know, we are committed to working with OHA to perpetuate their plans in Makai. And we look forward to working with Chair and everybody else, however way this bill goes. But they're a major landowner, and we would appreciate, we would welcome the opportunity to work with them.
Questions, Craig? I have a couple of questions for you as well.
And thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Come to mind your recommendation with regards to dedication of public facilities, whether it be cash or whatever. Now, have you seen or privy to the mapping or the plans already with OHA's, I guess, due diligence in creating the plans?
I, you know, I have to say I was, I was...
Okay, you gotta come forward to the mic.
Sorry, I, you know, I was honored to be invited to one of their town hall meetings.
All right, so reason I ask, because now you as the facilitator for the region and the HCDA authority. So let's say OHA comes up with a development that does not conform to your recommendations. The height limits per location, nearshore waters, and moving back to certain heights. So if their plan does not include the residential portion of height to your recommendation, now, so having said that, and then you're also asking OHA to give something back to our community, whether it's cash or create something of a nature to benefit the district. So working with OHA and offer the suggestion, recommendations that they redo areas that they have already conformed with their plans to create housing for their people. And because if they want to have those developments occurred to your ask and make changes, and also with regards to their cultural programs, if they wish to do a, but then they would be giving up on the number of... uh but then they would be giving up on the, the number of um and descriptions of what they want to build, whether it's on the Makai side that you disagree, you want it lowered, but don't, but isn't OHA already giving you, if they have to amend their plan, that would be a benefit to H C D A? So on their own properties to benefit the entire district? Because that would be something that they're giving up if they have to, you know, um. But they're doing that because you're asking and the right thing to do if OHA agrees. Because they are giving back, you know, area, uh a development that they've been wanting to do for their people as the owner of the land. So they're giving up the high density to what you're saying, so. So to me, that's a benefit that they're giving already to the community.
So Chair, let me, it's a long question, but let me see if I can, let me see if I can unpack that a little bit and try to, you know, answer it. So this, first of all, let me start at the public facilities dedication. It's, it's a requirement that's imposed on, you know, all new developments. It's.
And rightfully so, because the new developments you have that you guys already have approved is pretty much, they don't have the areas of development. OHA's lands got areas. They got nine parcels. So, you know, they can do that within their area.
So it, it, let me, let me just, let me just add to that and clarify. It's a requirement that's based on, you know, all new developments. So it's not, it's not just OHA. So and it's not just because of their parcels in Makai. The second part is, on the question for height and density, all I'm saying is, you know, height and density, those concepts, height and density, it's a, it's a land use principle. It's, it, it contemplates two hundred more feet than what we, the maximum we allow in, in Makai. The F A R of six point oh is about four, three, two times more than what we allow. The max is about two point five and three point five. So what I'm saying is, I think that's a, to, that we're in a better position from a planning perspective. I'm not saying I, you know, we're not going to do it, but I'm saying we should study it from an, from an environmental aspect. Does it make sense? I mean, because the planners at the time that they created the, the current rules thought they considered demographics, they considered sewer capacities, they considered other things, except sea level rise. And they developed those limitations on development. And to ask now, or to, from a legislator point of view, to just impose four hundred feet and six, six F A R, kind of, I think it doesn't recognize that, you know, it's a planning concept. We should, we should look at this from good planning and what are the impacts? We have to do an E I S. What is the sewer capacity? What is the water capacity, traffic, and not to mention sea level rise? So that's all I'm saying. And, and I don't look at it as a quick procore or give and take on the, on the public facilities dedication and, and the.
But you're willing to work with OHA and the planners that develop uh the, the plans and work with them as well.
Chair, you know, the law is the law. We have to follow the law. If the law is, remains that there's no residential, I'm willing to work with them to achieve what they can achieve in the, within the confines of law. I think before this hearing and during the planning process, I had offered to sit down with OHA from a planning point of view, just like we do, just like we do with any other major landlord. I consider OHA to be a major landowner in, in Makai, and I'm willing to have staff work, work with them. I have my Brian Tam, my uh director of planning and development here. So I'm willing to, I'm willing to work with them within the confines of the law.
Okay. Um I'm sure there's going to be some questions. Um Senators, are any comments? Senator Elefante followed by Senator Favela.
Yeah, a few follow-up questions. Director Nakamoto, thank you for your testimony. I know you took some time to diligently write your thoughts and comments.
Just, just one second. Steph, can you also give his testimony to Attorney General, please? If you have a copy. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um so from your understanding, currently now, as OHA as a landowner, what can they do height-wise and F A R-wise with the parcels?
So right now, I, I believe on their parcels, the height, the height limits vary, but it's whatever that's allowed under the current Makai area rules. So for Makai, they have some parcels that are on the waterfront. They have some parcels that are on the west side of the district by the reuse. So I, I think it's going to depend, but it goes from, as I mentioned, maybe forty-five to sixty-five feet high on the waterfront, and then kind of tears up to maybe two hundred, I think it's two hundred feet max on.
And that's contained in your testimony on page three, subsection D. That's correct. So they can do residential now?
Correct. Under, under the rules right now, the law right now. That is right.
Okay. With those particular parcels, I don't know you or if Mr. Tam would be best suited to answer this. Uh how many of those parcels are within the T O D quarter mile to half a mile radius?
Uh I'm going to ask the.
Yeah, of them.
Might, they might not be.
Okay. And the reason why is, I, I came from the city. I was zoning and planning chair for two years. And when you go up in height and density or F A R, there are bonus things that you have to do, community stuff. So I totally understand your viewpoints on that, and I was just curious to know on that. And then one last question I have, thank you, Madam Chair, is prior to you being executive director, were you a planner at H C D A or?
Thank you, Senator. Um so my tenure at H C D actually started in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine uh as a community outreach officer. I came back to H C D A in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh and then I, I came to the executive director position in May of last year.
Okay. Thank you, Director Nakamoto. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Favela.
In, in the plan, you're talking about public space and public access. In the OHA plan, planning to build a Hawaiian cultural center, is that qualifying to that, what you was just saying, giving back to the community? And um having that part of the give back to the community and the public?
Yeah, if, I, I think with Senator Favela, thank you for the question. Um you know, I have to look into it, but I believe something like that, if it's, if it's open to the public and it's available, it could qualify as a public facilities dedication. I, I think my um, my comment, Senator Favela, is let's not just throw out or let's just not accept uh OHA from that public facilities dedication requirement, because that's not what we do with every, any other landowner. But let me look into that, but I believe that something like that could be done.
Okay. You just said now that um um OHA is capable and allow to do residential. Can, can you clarify? Because um far as I know, um but they couldn't do any residential.
Yeah, I think I, I, I answered, I answered um Senator Elefante's question. The, right now, I think I, my comments were, the law is the law. Right now, residential is not allowed by statute. So that's the law, and we have to follow it. So residential is not allowed currently, currently.
Okay.
Sorry if I, sorry if I, you know, misstated that or I wasn't clear.
Okay.
Sorry, Senator.
Okay. The whole room was already speaking. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Senator, Senator Ihara. Followed by Senator, Senator McAlvee.
I'm trying to understand and maybe understand the best case for why there's no environmental impact statement, um to decide whether to award the higher density and so forth. Uh and I, I just wanted to, and so learning about this again after all these years. Uh there was a nineteen ninety-seven Brownfield study. The brief was involved in that?
I heard about that, though. I think it was the Lintiaco study, right?
I think so, yeah.
It was a.
Are, are they, was that, does that cover some of the sites?
It does. Let, let me, let me ask, maybe try to answer before we get into like two questions at once. If you allow me, let me ask, answer your first question about, you know, the environmental impact study.
Greg, sorry, you still got to speak into the mic. Oh, move the mic forward.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um when the two thousand and five Maokai, Makai area rules were promulgated, I, there's was a lot of consultation and I book, and EA was done to, for those um Makai area rules. So if we're to look at something like four hundred feet or increased density to six point oh, I think we're going to have to look yet and we, you know, um proceed with another environmental assessment or E I S to look at the impacts of an additional two hundred feet and additional density. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, but it's, it's not required?
Uh no, those, so those requirements would be not in our section two oh six E, but they're contained in chapter three forty-three, the environmental impact statement.
So that could happen after?
Well, we're, we're going to have to look at that, yeah. And, and I believe OHA might be, might need to, on their, if they're going to do any plans or development, they might be, maybe subject to chapter three forty-three requirements, but I'll let them address them.
So, so there, there's a nineteen ninety-seven Brownfield study. There was a two thousand and seven Kaka aqua parking garage, phase two environmental site assessment. Was that part of the, that, I'm not sure that's part of the E A process?
Yeah, I, I don't know if that was part of the rules um assessment. It came after the rules.
The, and the, there was a, I, I've read, uh there was a four hundred thousand dollar grant, federal grant to study in two thousand and thirteen petroleum and hazardous substances. Are you familiar with that?
No, not.
I, I, maybe ask, maybe for the results of that.
Sure.
Um because there may be already studies that um not to, that addresses some of the concerns, but less than.
Sure, sure.
Uh the other is, um there was, one of the sites is one twenty-one Ojui Street. It was called the Old Kiwalo Incinerator, which is right underneath one of the parcels. I'm not sure, um I, I guess EA, I'm not sure how much research or digging that, or, but you know, the EA did.
Yeah, they were, the E, the Lintiaco study looked at um all of the parcels, not all of the parcels had hazardous materials on it, but I believe most of them did.
And then I think since then, sea level rise has been an issue. I guess it wasn't really covered then?
I think in two thousand and five, as I mentioned, sea level rise wasn't really on anybody's radar. I mean, since then, sea level rise seems like it was on it.
Maybe not see on the total, on the ocean side, but I understand, I've seen the maps that show uh inundation and.
In addition.
Areas, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's on everybody's minds.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, that's, at least I raised my.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Having said that, with regards to the conversation that Senator Ihara noted with regards to um the report, the Lintiaco uh report. With that said, did that include lands outside of the OHA parcels? But at that time, that wasn't um dedicated to them yet. So what happened to the buildings around it? Because I understand that pretty much that entire region, not only the parcels that we identified in today's hearings. So what were those parcels um are mediated by those developers that's already there?
I, I think, you know, um the development that has occurred in the Makai area has been, you know, minimal, there's Japson Bill, right, uh Cancer Research Center. So I would assume that if there was any, and I'm not sure, I don't recall whether the Lintiaco report covered the Japson and the Research Center parcels, but.
And you got that information to us as well?
But if, if they did have hazardous materials, I'm sure they would have had to remediate it like any developer would.
Okay. Aside from Japson and that region, can you send to the committee as well all other parcels surrounding the region within that area? I would say a couple of blocks for developments that you already approved and it's already sold. Um uh send it to us as well?
Sure.
If those developments covered a remediation process.
If we have it, yeah.
Exactly. Okay. Senator McAlvee?
Uh no, actually Senator Ihara kind of touched upon the main points. I saw in your testimony too, that you actually seems to indicate that you would think that an expanded E I S would be necessary, given the impacts to Honolulu Harbor, Honolulu Airport, something that would protect obviously future buyers. But I guess my question would be if, how much would the cost be to conduct this kind of expanding environmental impact statement, and then who would bear the cost of that?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer the, I'll answer two, two questions. You have um cost and who would bear it? So as to the cost of remediation on a particular parcel, I think the cost is going to depend on the extent of the, you know, the um hazardous materials. It could also depend on the type of development. If, if, if the development was, you know, going to be um a surface parking lot, as an example, then remediation might be to just cap off the, the lot. If there, if the development required extensive digging and foundational work, the cost of remediation could be a lot more. Um that remediation work is not going to be borne by H C D A, it would be borne by the developer of that lot.
Well, let's just use the proposed office of oil and repairs plan. It's not, you know, what they're proposing for that area to do this expanded E I S, what would be the, the cost? I guess, and you're saying OHA would be the one to bear the cost to do this?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know on any particular lot. I, I don't know what they're going to build or how, you know, how, how much of the lot it's going to, the footprint is going to cover. So I really can't say what the, you know, even guess what the remediation cost would be. I, I can't even tell you right now.
But you're saying that if there, whatever cost would be associated would be more my office of oil and.
Well, it's going to be by, uh, just by any developer of that lot, whoever it is.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes. One second, Senator Favela. Um for those that are on Zoom land and for the rest of the participants today at this hearing, our hearing ends at two thirty, and we have not gotten to the second item on the agenda. The chairs have made a decision that we will continue this hearing up to two thirty. So we will dismiss our, we will defer our agenda, the next one, and to the end of our hearing today to another date. But we will concentrate on this hearing for this session. And so having said that, I see some of my former constituents from District Four here, uh from Waimea as well, so people have traveled to be here. And for those on Zoom land, you may have to sit and wait until this committee gets as much information, because this is in order for us to get to our schedules that we end. The joint hearing is this week. So both chairs have recommended that we continue on with this hearing. We won't dispense with, and you guys come another day. So, okay, if you can limit those questions, members to H C D A, because we'd also like to have OHA and their planners as well to come up and at least comment on what the Attorney General has said and also the conversation with H C D A. And they can also, so I, we want more discussions, because this is the only probably opportunity for us to complete passage of this measure before it goes to the next committee. And so, okay, so let's see if you can uh condense your hearing for H C D A. Uh Senator Favela, is your question to H C D A?
No, you can, you can, as a question, we can figure them out.
Yeah.
Um the environmental assessment for all the OHA lands, OHA lands has already been done.
Oh, yes?
Yeah. So can you just go look, uh maybe you never get the updated file or whatever? Can you go look at them and then share it with the committee? Because all OHA lands had already had, previously had environments, environmental assessment.
Uh recently or?
Yeah.
And we can ask that question as well, Senator.
Thank you.
And so, uh Craig, you're going to be around until we end this hearing. We appreciate that. There may be comments that we'd like OHA to at least um ask as well.
Sure.
Um, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Chair.
Mahalo. Okay, the rest of the testimonies, members, are pretty much advocates for um this measure before us as well as oppositions. But I'd like to offer. But I'd like to offer, members, an opportunity for OHA to respond as well. Uh, can we close the door, Clark? Okay, yeah. And, uh, yeah, we'd like OHA to at least kind of respond to the discussions that we've had here. I think it's all fair that they participate with the comments made by HCD. And I think there's no problem with the recommendations from the Attorney General because it's just clarification of language in his recommendation, I believe. Okay, all right, state your name for the record and the positions, please.
Aloha, mahalo, chairs, inoi and shimbukuro and committee members. I am Casey Brown, I'm the chief operating officer for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Hello, my age, Chair and esteemed members of the committee, Robbie Cabral, consultant, Kui Le.
Okay, you've heard the discussions with HCD and as well some questions that have been asked, but we'd like to hear your comment, your.
Okay, it's it's gonna be a task to remember all the questions, but one thing I'll start with was maybe some of the environmental studies. So OHA does have a few studies in hand and related to the grant that was mentioned. Um, we, we performed and ordered a phase-two environmental site assessment on all the parcels, you know, that we own. And we also have, the next step usually after they do the phase-two, which is to actually inspect the soil, is to do a study on alternatives for remedies. So how to actually address that? And so we have studies on two parcels right now. But it would be in OHA's plans as, you know, proper development planning to continue to do those studies and order those assessments on remedies. So that would be part of any prudent development planning.
I'd like to speak on the appraisals. So I made some notes and I wanted to be really clear that in two thousand and twelve, when the state engaged Halstrom to conduct their appraisal of the lands granted to OHA, in that, in that study, it stated that the valuation was based on four hundred feet. Four hundred feet was included in that appraisal. So I want to make sure that that's stated for the record. OHA is only asking for the four hundred because it was part of the valuation. I also wanted to comment that as a part of extensive due diligence, it's clear that the valuation of two hundred million in the settlement of two thousand and twelve, that the numbers just don't work. OHA has recently undertaken an extensive appraisal, just recently, of all of the lands. And it shows the valuation today way under a hundred million dollars. So when you take a look at the two hundred million dollar settlement of two thousand and twelve, a decade has passed. OHA has an expectation to be able to yield a return on investment conservatively. If they had been paid cash as opposed in lieu of the lands and they invested it as part of their trust corpus at seven percent conservatively, they would have had four hundred million dollars today. So there's a huge obligation and pressure on the trustees to perform their due diligence to be able to yield a fair return on investment to the native Hawaiian people. Also deferred maintenance, I wanted to address that because there's a lot of disinformation that's being mentioned by opposition that OHA is asking the state where we want the deferred maintenance budget for ourselves from taxpayers' monies. That's not correct. As a part of the extensive due diligence, what OHA has uncovered is that there was deferred maintenance by DOT going back to the mid nineteen seventies. So it's a well-known documented fact. So consequently, the bulkhead as well as the revetment, which is the area, which is the walls of the shoreline for infrastructure support. We had contracted experts that got into their wetsuits, went under with cameras. And that's where that sixty-five million dollars came in. And I thought it'd be important for you folks to know that. I know the issue of sea level seems to be a big issue in terms of planning and it should be. As a part of the master planning by OHA, they undertook land experts, experts in the subject matter of sea level. And if you look at the existing development going on in Kakaako, you will see that Howard Hughes, for example, the A- Ale building with the Whole Foods, they built it up very highly. So OHA's experts have factored into the planning over the next hundred years of how that needs to look, given the issues relating to sea level. Also, the environmental report of two thousand and seventeen, that was a grant from US DOE? Environmental Department, yeah, okay. So a four hundred thousand dollars was granted. What was the, the clear response from an extensive report? Was that it takes remediation and that's done every day. And I think Chair had raised with HCD, Mr. Nakamoto, that that's been done on all the other parcels. And that is the same commitment OHA has on their parcels. They understand that responsibility. Also, we all know there's a housing crisis and our people are the ones that need it more than anybody. But we understand that as stewards of the land, that in terms of housing, that as OHA builds it, it's for the public. We're not Department of Hawaiian Home Lands where we're waived under the Fair Housing Act. And OHA is approaching this with being very, very transparent in their messages to the public and letting them know this isn't only about Hawaiians. Yes, the Hawaiians own this and it is their trust resources. But they also understand that the housing that's being developed is for all of Hawaii. So I just wanted to make sure I was very clear about that.
I have a question for you. Um, with regards to the first appraisal you said was done in two thousand and twelve, was that appraisal done prior to governor's offer to OHA and done by the state?
Yes.
Okay, so governor, before he, he did the due diligence of providing these parcels to OHA, then they did do their appraisals at that time to make sure that whatever was due to the trust and to OHA, that it it was at that point in time an appropriate figure.
Um, may I respond, Chair?
Yes.
So at the time, under the speed at which that deal was happening, it it may have appeared like the appropriate figure. However, no one had the time or the information to understand the infrastructure that was in place and the soil conditions. And so that was not factored in. The other thing that I think was very flawed with those, with that appraisal was it assumes that commercial use can succeed in a vacuum. It can, it can succeed without people in the area, a huge, huge oversight. Because everything that we've learned from our recent experts that we've hired tells us commercial use only will fail. You need the residential for that to succeed. So that's another big flaw with the valuation back then.
Okay, and you're, you did say that OHA has conducted the appraisal as well recently, what year?
Months ago.
And it dipped to two hundred mil?
No, it dipped.
Below.
Way below one hundred mil.
Below one hundred, in two thousand and twenty-three.
In two thousand?
It's well below one hundred million currently.
Today's.
Right dollars.
Okay, all right. I may have several questions more, but we'll allow others to participate. Senator McElvee followed by Senator, Senator Ihara.
I appreciate that, Chair. I was gonna ask kind of the big question in my mind. I mean, it was a rest appraisal, it didn't include the assessment of brownfields. It was based upon the faulty premise of commercial. You spent money on studies, R and M remediation, and potentially more money for environmental impact statements. Do you think this represents a material breach of the agreement that was made? And that this new governor and OHA should perhaps now, because there's a material breach? This is for all claims, past and present and future, this is it. Do you think it's time that the new governor perhaps go back to the negotiating table with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to look at a renegotiation for this issue, which could include perhaps more other lands that are perhaps much more beneficial to OHA insofar as being able to have a corpus for its beneficiaries?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. I can say clearly that OHA has reached out to their constituents, to their beneficiaries. There was a poll about even a decade ago and the Hawaiian people have spoken. They want these lands. They want these lands, there's been quite a bit of money expended from OHA over the decade. There has been several attempts to approach the legislature, two failed efforts coming from the House. And we thank the Senate for everything they've done for the Hawaiian people. And I can, I can say here with the chair sitting here, that OHA's position is that they would like to continue on, and this is why we're here before the legislature, we would like to exhaust all avenues under the law. And we would like to keep this, and if it requires dialogue with the the governor, I can tell you that it would be more about valuation than it would be about exchanging lands. We're committed to this and our people have spoken. Uh, the the trustees have an obligation to uphold the commitment to the Hawaiian people. And that was by a poll about a decade ago where they identified that housing is the most critical. And it was at a time that there was huge nation building underway. And our people realized if we're gonna be, we can't arrive at a conclusion, that the next step was housing. And that's where we're at today. So the settlement in two thousand and twelve gave OHA the confidence that there would be something that they could develop in central Honolulu.
Great, thank you. Senator Ihara?
Two questions. The two parcels you mentioned for the phase-two EA, did that include the, um, the old Kiwalos incinerator? Site?
Um, the things to studies burden on all the parcels. Um, and so, yes, that's that's the site you're talking about is I, yes.
Okay, great. On the appraisal, highest best use, I'm sure appraisers have to be licensed, right? And and they, they have, I guess they use highest best use, so is it proper for an appraiser to assume something that's not being?
I can tell you.
Talking about four hundred feet, which was not highest best use on the books. So I don't understand how, and I'm trying to find evidence of that. Assess, appraisal that has four hundred foot, I understand one of the two factors is. But I'm trying to find, can we, can I get maybe the the report that shows? Because when I see my my own eyes and I sit here. And. No, no. Highest best, I had another question about that. And it was just for commercial, okay? On the deferred maintenance question, I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
So are you saying that there was a, an obligation by the state that was breached? Well, I'm not sure if it gets to your question, that should have been disclosed, that was not disclosed?
That's correct, sir. That's correct. As a part of the negotiations, there was non-disclosure on the existing condition of the lands. When OHA inherited it and they did extensive due diligence, what surfaced was the pre-existing conditions archived and by the DOT reports on file that it was deferred all the way back to the mid nineteen seventies. So the state had full knowledge of this.
But did not disclose it.
But did not disclose this.
Yeah, it's, I mean, more I learn about it, you know, I deserve better lands than these because these are hazardous lands. And the last question for now is, these, all those Makai lands were underwater in the eighteen hundreds, I understand?
Yep, actually, it was submerged, that, that, then they built a landfill.
Is how much feet of fill was added? Because it was seeped, seeped underwater, right, a land? And then it was, I I understand a wall was built and they filled it up. How many feet at today's level, street level? How many feet down was the seabed at that time, submerged lands? Do you have any idea?
Have to check Senator on that, on that, yeah, we'll get that for you.
How far you have to power drive and.
To hit that rock.
There's sinkholes or whatever, but with all this hazardous materials, you know, it seemed like there'd be better lands to build high rises, but you got what you got, so.
That's right.
One hundred and seventy.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, any further comments, members? Okay. Um, where is it, Clark? Fred?
I had another question.
Yes, go ahead.
While you're, while we're happy.
Sorry, folks, we're trying to manage our agenda because all those waiting outside and the other agenda items, I need to make an announcement for them so they can go home, but they need to know when we can move those agendas out. So, but continue.
My question was.
Uh, okay, while you dwell on it, Chair would like to make an announcement that there is a Mazda. The license plate is LF as in Frank, C as in Charlie, eight two three. I understand you need to move your car before it'll be towed away. So it's a Mazda, I don't have the color. Okay, all right.
I thought, I remember my question.
All right, okay.
I know I just mentioned a few times that there was an expectation and the community reports, you know, and I saw. I don't, the status of a report for a dead bill, I don't know if you're trying to, what the message was because, I mean, a pass bill would be good, but a, a report from one body doesn't mean, doesn't ever say true. And it's been promoted as a legislature expectation, but it's really just one body.
No.
Uh, so I don't know, do I, am I missing something?
It, it was from the the Senate that was the body that passed it and it was the bill that passed that during that.
Right, one body.
Yeah, yeah.
If I didn't speak to that as well?
No, no, I, I'm just trying to get my, what's intended and what my understanding is to match. And I've heard that the legislature said it, but I know here that it's only the Senate. So I, I'm just trying to reconcile in my brain the two differences, so.
So the committee reports does substantiate that it was the Senate.
Yeah.
And and the way that we're interpreting that is it establishes the intent of the settlement agreement.
For the Senate.
Yes, for the Senate, that there was, there was good faith on the Senate's part to resolve the situation and recognizing that they had to come back.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just pointing out that it's a bicameral initiative.
Yes.
Okay, and so to think that it's unicameral is not quite accurate, so. And I take, you know, you take what you can get, right? And so you got Senate report, that's good, that's something better than nothing. You know, and it's not the whole thing. That's my man.
We, we understand that and we believe that it just in terms of our legal rights, that it goes to the intent of good faith between the Senate and OHA. And it was documented in the committee. And that's what all OHA is saying, is that we, there was good faith when the discussions were going on to go to the next step, that's the point.
Okay, all right. Members and for those on Zoom land and those outside and here in room two two nine, both chairs would like to make an announcement. Because this issue is very important to this, both committees. Um, and we're going to make announcements so that others that were after this hearing needs to know as well. Both committees, the Committee on Water and Land and the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs is going to defer the hearing for these bills. A bills seven three six before us now. Senate Bill ten thirty-four, Senate Bill ten thirty-six, Senate Bill ten forty, and Senate Bill thirteen fifty-four continue to defer these hearing bills to Thursday, February sixteenth at one P M in room.
Your room?
Two two four.
Or two two four?
In room two two four. Um, so we will be perhaps. So we will be perhaps looking at an earlier, like start at 12, but it's upon the decision-making on our president, so. But for now, we will be deferring those bills to 1:00 PM on Thursday, February 16th in room 224. And members, we are going to continue that this bill, SB 736, on the OHA issue will continue on until pow at 2:30. Okay, so you have questions now? And for the two chairs, the chairs would also like to note that SB 736, we may, there's two things we can do. We can continue the hearing, which would be my, our recommendation. I don't want to just say we're going to do 736 as decision-making today. Okay, so you must bear with us because it's too much of, you know, information that our committees want to hear and also to make sure that we have the opportunity for OHA and all those others feel that they want to address. So we're being flexible, we're going to be transparency to offer, you know, this hearing participation, okay? Okay, and for those that have sent testimonies by our rules of those bills that we've identified, there will be no new testimonies from all of those bills, including SB 736. So it's like in the hundreds. So I think you'll be happy with all those bills that the, the testimonies has arrived, okay? So with that said, please continue, members. Any further questions? Senator Favela.
Chair, just give me a second.
Senator Favela, Senator Yitara, are you, no more for now? Okay, pow, okay.
No, just your suggestion says we have a lot of people that want to testify on this hearing and maybe they might not be able to come back after today. Says we know we can get our agencies back. Can we just have those guys, if you can, you don't mind, have them give their testimony?
Yeah, if, chairs, if you, members, if you agree, then perhaps we can go down to the list that has been submitted. Yeah, especially, okay, and it's been customary for my committees before, and we'll continue to do that as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, okay. Okay, we're doing now. Okay. We'll proceed then with those that took a flight to come here as well. Please, if you did send testimony and those on Zoom land from afar, anyone here presently though, that came from away. Okay, come forward. Anybody flew in? Okay, aloha. And you did send testimony?
Your name, please? My name is Ua Kora Korea. Aloha, chairs.
Aloha.
Aloha. I actually come from the big island in Waimea, and although my family lives here up on Leva Heights by Kamemeha School, and we look down at Kakaako, and we're born and raised here all our lives, seven generations from Kamemeha all the way through, with our lineage already proven in courts. It is sad to hear that the Hawaiians must get something in lieu of what is rightly theirs. And then to use the monies for the best interests of all Hawaii. But that's the way that the courts work. In this case here, it's also sad to hear opposition thinking that it's a private beach because it's not a private beach. All of Hawaii is for all of Hawaii. It has always been that way. All Hawaiians believe that whenever we do something, it is going to benefit all. It has never been just about one race or one nationality or one type of people or one color. We have always been variating to all. That may be our problem. When we took this in lieu of not realizing the full capacity of it, the state put a strong word, which we could go and have released later on, but coming back to you to ask for that leverage of changing the building and/or codes and/or restriction, that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, Poa.
Thank you, Lorraine, thank you.
Mahalo for coming all the way over. And just to add, it's 11 years later. How long are we going to wait? Okay, any further persons from outside? All right, we'll go down and Mahialani Safer, she's from Ko'olau Foundation. Mahalo, good to see you. And we'll give you one minute, everyone, okay?
We'll make it quick. If you got my written testimony stamped on that testimony, but I wanted to emphasize that. Fair is fair. HCDA let all those Ma'aka buildings go up with, to me, not that many restrictions, and now they're putting all these restrictions on the Makai buildings.
It's kind of tough, but let me also add then. If we all remember history, in the 1800s and 1900s, early on, those lands that we talk about were all in the generation of before. You had the Lois, you had the Kalo, and so what's wrong with us going back?
But the thing is, the third thing is when they gave the land to OHA, many of us knew that wasn't a good deal. There were problems with it. I, I think even OHA knew it, but they were pushed against a rock in a hard place. They had no choice. They were told, this is it, you have no other choice. And I think that it's a, it's the state's fault for doing that, and we're hoping that this new Senate, this new House will fix that problem, and that's my main point.
Thank you, Mahialani, mahalo. Ronald Iwami, friends of Kevalo. And aloha.
Oha. Chairs and members, we'll make it quick, short and sweet. I, my written testimony was about the history of preserving public land in Kaka'akumakai. So it started from 2005, and I just want to tell the legislators who worked here at that time how hard the people worked, how hard they strived and the effort they put in to create this law. It was created, yeah, by a people's movement, as it was called back then. And it convinced the legislators, all but one, to pass this law. So to me, at that point, public policy was set where no residential in Kaka'akumakai and no selling of public land. And we're not against, I want to say this, that we're not against OHA.
Ron, you gotta summarize, your time is up.
Okay.
There's a red light there.
Okay, the last part I want to say is we are willing to reach out and work together. So we want to move forward with this. And I think that's the right thing to do because we don't want to buck here's year after year after year after year. We want to work together and find a solution. And if OHA is willing to talk with us, we're willing to talk with them on, at their table and see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Wayne Takamine. Okay, all right, from Kaka'akumakai Community Public in Opposition, Makana Paris. Makana, okay?
Hello? Hello?
Uh, once, okay, I, Makana Paris. Must, oh, okay. Okay, who are you?
I'm from a parish.
Hello?
See things, but I see you, Makana. Okay, we need a good laugh today anyways. Anyway, okay, Makana, aloha.
Aloha, Makana Paris.
Oh, yeah, and Makana, I'm
This is for ironworkers.
Okay.
Yeah, ironworkers stabilization fund.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, and members of the committee. I humbly come before you. My name is Makana Paris, and the one and only.
Okay, IT, can you take him off the screen over there? Okay.
On behalf of T. George Paris and the Ironworker Stabilization Fund, we strongly urge you to pass this out. We believe that is long overdue. That Hawaiians have come to this body for far too long, begging for what is actually theirs.
Okay.
So we also wanted to let you know that with this, we believe that OHA will make an economic engine to provide for themselves and for all of Hawaii, including the many thousands of construction jobs if we actually go vertical and allow the exemptions. So we humbly ask you to consider moving this out. Mahalo.
Mahalo, okay. Okay, and Chung? Aloha.
Aloha, chairs, members of the committee, and Chung, representing Kuilei also. I stand on my written testimony, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and I really want everybody else to have a chance to speak. But we're only talking about 30 out of 221 acres in Kaka'akumakai. And in fact, you know, he was talking about the dedication, Greg mentioned that. In fact, 10 of OHA's 30 acres is, will be open space. They've made that commitment. And the vast majority, the, the rest of the 200 and something acres, that's going to be mostly owned by city and county and state. There are only four landowners, Kamemeha Schools, OHA, City and County, and the state. The last thing I just want to mention is that a pollster was doing a poll of 743 respondents, and 78 of them, 78% of Ohaan voters support residential in Kaka'akumakai. Thank you.
Thank you, mahalo.
He was here, but he was in the queue.
Oh, okay. Okay, IT, Wayne, are you still around?
There he is. Yes?
Okay, you're the real Wayne Takamine. All right, all right, proceed. Got one minute.
Hi, I'm Wayne Takamine. I was the chairman of the Kaka'akumakai Community Planning Advisory Council, or CPAC. During the Kaka'akumakai master planning process, the master plan was approved in 2010. So there were about 55, at least 55.
Or you oppose?
I'm opposing.
Okay, proceed.
So we did a conceptual master plan for Kaka'akumakai, and all this time, we, we thought that OHA wanted to go forward with what we had planned, but at the middle of the session where they got the land ownership, they told us that, no, they want to build condominiums, and I'm sorry, but that has been illegal for a while, since 2006, so prohibited since 2006. So right now, my understanding is that the land is state land, is state trust land, and OHA has been assigned that land. So we want to ensure that the public maintains his right to the waterways. And also, there is also-
Wayne, your time is up. You can, you can stop closing, please. Your time is up.
There is a lot of hazardous waste underground. I have not seen the OHA Phase Two environmental statements, but I do look at the 2007 Kakaku Garage, which is the piano lot, and there's a whole bunch of hazardous waste.
Thanks, Wayne. Thank you. Mahalo. Okay, Lorraine Minato Ishii is on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Wait, what did she say?
Not present on Zoom.
All right, okay, let's see. Okay, Legomi Khan. No? She left. Okay, she sends communication in support. Okay, Luann Faborito?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, all right. Lee Sichter on Zoom. Proceed, Ms. Leon Ali, is that you?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, you have a minute, please.
OHA chairs and committee members, I'm Lee Sichter. This bill is premature. Because Hakuone is owned by OHA, a state agency, any development proposed by a new master plan to increase density triggers a new Chapter 343 environmental assessment. I urge you to defer on Senate Bill 736 until OHA completes the mandatory environmental review. You should then use that technical data, environmental analysis, economic impact analysis, climate change analysis, infrastructure impact analysis, and cultural impact assessment required to be included in that document to inform your decision-making, as Chapter 343 originally intended. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. We have testified for Kamemeha Schools, I think it's, is it Yali Ali Sarzona? In support? Okay, mahalo. Thank you very much. Okay, Ilima DiCosta, DiCosta. Okay.
Yes, I'm on Zoom. Mahalo for allowing me to testify in support of SB 736. I'm Kanakama Ole, and I am one of the individuals who actually opposed residential development back in the early 2000s. And I've had an opportunity to reconsider my position because I work with individuals who are unsheltered and the majority of them are Kanakama Ole. I also work in Kaka'akul, and I would really appreciate the opportunity to live near where I work. So I think that this is just the first step in the, a long road to fulfilling OHA's and the state's obligation to the native Hawaiian people as well as the people of Hawaii. So I talk all the testimony from Poa, my mother, and from Makana. And with all due respect, nobody's asking Mr. Takamine to live there. He does not have to live on hazardous waste. We will take care of our own. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Maddox Sujiya.
Present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, he's here in person. Thank you, IT. Aloha.
OHA chair members, vice chairs, all members attending. My name is Maddox Sujiya.
Yeah, put the mic on. You can move it around, yeah.
Is it working?
It is working. It's following you.
Okay, my name is Maddox Sujiya, and I stand in firm affirmation of SB 736. The reasons being are just numbers analytically. On top of all of the promises culturally, on top of the previous promises laid out by OHA, if we look nationally, according to the National Association of Home Builders, housing already accounts for 15 to 18% of GDP. And this is for people residential living in those areas. The promise to build up upon Kaka'akul is a promise to all local people in order to take an initiative to prioritize our own production over current foreign investment, to prioritize our people, and to further move into a new era where Hawaii is independent and can move for itself. And so I stand again in affirmation. Thank you.
Okay, where do you go to school?
Oh, Kamalama.
Okay, thanks for being here. All right, thank you. All right. Robbie, I see your name here, but we're continuing, right? Okay, Kyle Baker. Okay, yeah. And just for your information, we got extension, 15 minutes more, so we'll continue until 2:45.
Chair, Crowdbaker is not present on Zoom, but I believe we have Kavehi before Robbie.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, all right, okay, all right. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you for allowing me to be here. We only have one minute. And I want to tell these gentlemen over here, laws can be changed. And it was changed, and now we want to change it back for our people, bottom line. And people are saying these are public lands. It's not. It's a debt paid to OHA for the beneficiaries. It's not for the whole state, but OHA will use it for all the people. And then they say they want a Ko'olina. I didn't know Hawaiians built Ko'olina. I didn't know that Ko'olina was going to have a promenade on the ocean for all to have. I didn't know that, uh, Ko'olina was gonna have a promenade on the ocean for all to have. I didn't know Ko'olina was gonna have a Hawaiian culture center for all of its kind. So, uh, we need to stop all these false statements that people are making. And let's just make it right for the Hawaiian people, mahalo, Louis.
Mahalo.
Just, uh, Chair, some person, um, just in response, um.
Senator Favela.
So just to, to remind people that I wanna say, um, the policy was me, and the policy was this, and the policy changed. Look at Hawaiian homes, policy had changed over a year, governor to governor, director to director, and the way it today, so policy can change, all along, thank you.
Okay. Uh, on, on Zoom, um, is that you, Cavei Korea?
Yes, aloha, everybody, I stand by my testament, so that you.
Proceed. Oh, okay, okay, alright, mahalo, Cavei.
Hello.
Okay, um. Audrey Lee testifying for Malama Moana. In opposition. Okay, I was told we will allow those, uh, to speak that signed up on Zoom and here in person. Um, so we will then, um, dismiss this hearing and continue on. Chair, uh, would like to say that we do have, we did have, um, sixty-eight communications in support. Uh, we had eighty-seven in opposition, eight comments as well. Uh, and so as we did, uh, in our previous comments, uh, and for those, uh, that heard me earlier, we will continue this hearing on Senate Bill seven three six. And I say continue so that we can include more discussions, so we're not cutting you off. So we will continue this Senate Bill seven three six to Thursday, February sixteenth at one P M in room two two four, uh, as well. And so, members, any questions while we're here as well? Then, and did I do everything that's technically right? Okay, we have, we're all managed by the process. And if I say the wrong thing, then things won't work, okay? Um, OHA, H C D A Attorney General, any more information, we're going to allow you to make comments as well. OHA, Ms. Cabral? No, okay, we'll continue the discussions as well. I see your hand raised, but are you a regular testifier?
I'm a regular testifier, but I do not sign up to testify in person, I'm staying today because of everything I've been hearing.
Okay, we'll, I, I can't do that because we're already have to dispense with this room uh, for now, another hearing as well, so we're gonna be deferring this, and you can come back on the sixteenth as well. Alright, so, members, um, any further, we're allowing you. Okay, uh, everyone, uh, then we'll see you on the sixteenth. Okay, alright, the Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs is concluding, uh, this agenda item today, Wednesday, February eighth.